Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, you too, the public, with all we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, as councilman, please say the invitation for it.
Blessed by his most gracious everlasting fathers, once more again, we will come to say thank you for your grace and mercy. We thank you for everyone that's assembled here today. We ask you to bless them individually and collectively. I always ask you to bless this council. We make all decisions for the better of Dillon County. We just give you praise for everything that you're doing right now. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Number three, approval of agenda requires a motion.
I think we'll just choose to approve agenda as any of the pretty.
That a motion need a second?
Second.
Motion now a second, in discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Four, approval minutes, eleven twenty nineteen, regularly require a motion.
Make a motion to the chair.
Motion need a second?
Second.
Motion a second, in discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Five, public hearing. A, Dillon County Council, Public Meeting on twelve eleven nineteen, at its office at one oh nine South Third Avenue, Dillon, South Carolina, two nine five three seven four p.m. Purpose of the meeting is to give an opportunity to become acquainted with a proposed rural development project, set a generally of improvement to the Dillon County Airport, equipment for Dillon County in building improvements. Citizens will have an opportunity to commit, come in on such items as economic, environmental impact, service area, and alternative program.
There's nobody signed, so make sure it matches.
Six, new business. Eight, snow and ice removal agreement.
This is something we've signed every year with highway department, where we can help them when doing the snow and ice and their weather.
Stuff like that. All right. Requires a motion?
No motion.
Motion need a second? Motion a second, in discussion.
That, that means if we do the work, if we submit a building, highway, they'd be in motion?
Yeah, we keep up with how many hours each piece of equipment, who's on with that sort of thing.
In discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? B, approval, validate closing schedule, twenty twenty.
Make a motion to approve the schedule, twenty twenty.
That a motion need a second? Motion a second, in discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Six C, approval of county council regular meeting schedule, twenty twenty. Sign your packet also. Requires a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion need a second, in discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Six D, P D R T A, Don Strick. I'm trying not to slow you down for most of the night.
Chairman, council, thank y'all for having me tonight. I'm here for a few different reasons, and first of all, I'd like to start by thanking all of you for, I think back in October, you approved five oh one to move forward with public transportation in Dillon County. And so I wanted to just come and say that I certainly appreciate that. There's been a lot of work that's been done in the past nine months to try to make that a reality. A lot of meetings, a lot of work with Department of Commerce and S E D O T Office of Public Works, your administrator here, Flaber, and a lot of other folks, a lot of industry, a lot of private partnerships that's come together. So I was, I was asked just to come and give an update or presentation on kind of what we're looking at as far as potential growth, to be able to make this thing happen, and kind of the routes themselves, and what's possible. And that's kind of what I want to do tonight, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have. I do have a presentation, and I will promise we get through it quickly. If I'm going too fast, slow it down. If you want me to speed up and it's be done, just let me know. So I'll, I'll start with that. First of all, I just wanted to say that about six months ago, P D R T A introduced an app for the first time. It's something that's been real important for us because anybody can download an Apple or Android app and track, live track any bus in our fleet. So it's actually something that's pretty good, and you don't have to wait by a bus stop when it's getting cold like it is out there now, or in the summer when it's a hundred and five degrees. You actually can see it on your app. You can come outside when the, when the bus is pretty much close to you. On that little screen there, one thing you'll notice is that we have service in, in most of the six counties that we're, we're here to serve, P D R T A's commission to serve. Dillon County is not one of those, so we want to try to figure out how to, how to make that happen. That's what we're working toward. The next, next slide there is really the meat of it, and I wanted to just kind of run through that with you and, and just get thoughts and input there. This service would be a partnership, that's a collaboration that's going to be able to allow reliable public transportation for industry as well as essential services, medical, education purposes, folks going to grocery stores, shopping, coming downtown to pay bills, you know, doing pretty much anything throughout Dillon County. If you, if you're looking there, you'll see that, like I said, P D R T A's commission to serve six counties, one of the first things that we're looking to do is have some connectivity with other counties. So the first one I have here is Marion County, Dillon County. Marion County citizens have the power to opportunity to come to Dillon County to do, to do industry, to basically go shopping, do whatever they would like to do there. There will be connections between Mullins and Marion, coming this way. That, that also would either entail connections in Lakeview or Latta before reaching here. We're also looking at Marlboro County. The reason we're looking at these areas is because after many meetings with area industries, we found out that although a lot of folks in Dillon County are employed, a lot of people are looking to expand, to bring in new, new clientele, and connecting these counties gives them opportunity to be able to do that. I found out that Purdue, roughly eighty-five percent of their employees are in Dillon County. They would like to, to kind of increase that. One of the markets they're looking at would be Florence and Marlboro County, but the issue is reliable transportation. So they're interested, very interested in trying to come to the table to make this a reality. Like I said, Marlboro County would be Bennettsville, Clough, McCall, coming to Dillon County. Last year, we started bus service in Marlboro County. One of the first things I noticed in all our public hearings that we do is everywhere I went, I kept getting the questions, how can we get to Dillon County? I didn't realize how many people live in Marlboro County but work in Dillon County. So they're looking for ways to get there. Florence County, so we would connect in Florence, when you connect Florence, we already have connectivity with Arlington County, so you'd be able to have interconnectivity between Florence and Dillon as well. That would come ninety-five or three oh one, depending on which way we did it. And then one of the big key things for, for me, outside the industry, which is going to be vital to get, to get these folks to and from, is the public service side. What we're looking at doing is, is eight hours of service in the city of Dillon, running around Dillon, basically, you know, every, you know, earlier I was at the library doing a little bit of work, but every hour, the bus would be coming by there. So, you know, it's eight or nine times a day, it would have service there. It's going to hit your downtown area, your, the Walmart, pretty much everywhere that people really want to get to. McCloud Hospital, Kellis South, all those, all those areas, Northeastern Tech, you'll have bus service there, first time in a long time. The other big thing is, one thing we're hearing is the connectivity between the rural areas. Your Latta, your Lakeview, Little Rock, Hamer, all those areas need connectivity to Dillon. You know, folks need to come in and do whatever it may be, whether they have a doctor's appointment once a month they struggle to get to. We've heard it, all of you have heard it. How many, how many folks are paying a relative or a friend fifteen, twenty, twenty-five dollars just to travel ten miles? This service that we're proposing will be fair for, there's no charge for them. So that fifteen or twenty dollars, they can spend that doing something else. They want to go to a diner downtown or whatever it may be. They would have options to do that. Pay bills, buy their medicine that they can't afford now. There's, there's things that they would be able to do. Whenever we come into an area like this and we provide service, one thing we have to do is provide ADA complimentary service. So any route that we establish within three quarters of a mile of that route, if someone's in a wheelchair, if they're on a dirt road where they can't get to a bus stop, we actually, within twenty-four hours, if they call me today at twelve o'clock, for tomorrow, I'll come pick them up from their home, take them to their appointments. One thing we've seen, and you'll see a slide in a minute, but in Marlboro County, that's been big. It's really, every month, it's increasing. A lot of folks need the service, a lot of seniors, a lot of folks that are disabled, on walkers, wheelchairs, that we don't see every day, they need the service. Right now, some of them may have Medicaid, they require seventy-two hours notice to even schedule an appointment. If you're feeling bad today, you want to go to the doctor, do you want to wait seventy-two hours? So a lot of them are calling the ambulance to go pick them up and take them somewhere. They don't have to do that. With the services, it would be able to get them there. They're already feeling bad, you know, if it's something that's going to get worse by seventy-two hours, they're going to be in pretty bad shape. So this would give them the option to be able to do that without having to depend on other people. And then the other component is connections with industry during the day. So for instance, Harbor Freight, sometimes you may go in for a shift from six or seven to four o'clock, but they may knock off at two o'clock. This would actually have connectivity to industry during the day. So there would be some connectivity to get folks to and from during the day, as well as all the other services that we described here. We're looking at about a hundred and twelve thousand miles on the workforce side, over four thousand hours on the workforce side that we've been providing transportation for. On the public side, over thirty-five hundred hours, over fifty-eight thousand miles. All the fuel that we're going to buy for this service, we bought in Dillon County. We spend at P D R T A about thirty thousand dollars a month in fuel. So all that will be new revenue coming into this area. So that total is, is right at eight thousand hours, a hundred and seven thousand miles. What that means for us is we're looking for employees, we already have a couple from Dillon County. We're going to look for a mechanic. Haven't found that yet, but we need a mechanic. I think y'all may have talked about a mechanic at the last meeting, or maybe I'm confusing that with the city, but someone was looking for a mechanic over in this area. So that was you, okay? They're hard to come by. So that's the service. So there's a, a lot of potential. This is a starting thing. So this basically would take care of first shift for industry, and it would be able to connect all of these rural communities to Dillon, providing service, and, and the demand response piece, which I think would be critical for your CareSouth and your McCloud, getting proposed appointments that are missing. I was at McCloud earlier today. Everywhere I go, and I ask them, you know, what's the biggest, biggest obstacle that you face? And, you know, what's, what's the most reason you have no-shows for your doctor's appointments? They say reliable transportation, every time, every, every meeting we go to. So, you know, it's, I'm passionate about it, but if I go there, and that's what everybody says, unless they're lying to me, then, you know, it's easy to be passionate about that. The Department of Commerce got on board several months ago, and one of the things that they wanted to see was, at first I thought it was going to be strictly focused on industry because it's Department of Commerce. That quickly got kind of changed in, in a meeting we had earlier on, and basically they said, you can't have one without the other. Commerce said that. Said that, you know, they see the importance of having the, the public side and the industry piece. So they got behind it, they were willing to support it. There were some things laid out there, and some things that are still kind of open-ended that we would love to try to get revolved, but between the Department of Commerce and S E D O T Office of Public Transit, they're going to completely fund one point one million dollars in assets for us to start this service. For us to do that, there were some things that they kind of put on the table that needed to, to happen, and I can't see, you know, I'm not an expert in those areas that they request, but I certainly don't see a whole lot standing in the way of that, unless you gentlemen can share something with me that kind of tells me something different. But we'd be looking at really nice, heavy-duty, twelve-year buses in the cities, the smaller cutaway buses, just because they get better fuel economy, you may, you may not need a forty-passenger bus running around the city of Dillon, you may be able to get by with a fourteen or a twenty-two passenger. But all of those, if we can figure out how to work together and come together, basically, we'd be able to try to make that happen. I'm hoping, like I said, this goes back months. I haven't had a whole lot of conversations saying that we're still good to go, we just got to get this done, so I'm hopeful that that's still on the table. Whether it is for certain, I'm not sure at this point, but I do know that us moving forward, we have to figure out how to handle the requests that were, are, this has already been presented. There was, you know, several things that were presented on sustainability, how we can figure out how to get this thing done year one, year two, year three, and beyond, so we're not having to go to, you know, the same battle over and over again, just because of the, the total benefit of what it's going to do. Your next slide, I mentioned the one point one million dollars in assets that we're hoping will be a hundred percent covered. The next slide shows your operating, operating costs, just over six hundred thousand dollars for all that service that I, I talked about, is what it will cost to produce that for an entire year. With that being said, of the six hundred thousand dollars, roughly sixty-five percent are right at four hundred thousand of the six hundred thousand is already covered on the federal side. We have to come up with about two hundred thousand, just over two hundred thousand on the local level. With, with where we're at, we're still a little bit short of that. We got to figure out how to bridge the gap. There's still a lot of conversations going on. I'm not sure if county or economic development, or if Tony, if y'all have had more conversations with industry and any commitments. I know that I've, I've been pushing myself for that because I wanted to make sure it got done, but we're close. We just got to, we got to be able to bridge the gap. I would say that we're probably eighty percent there. We just got to figure out how to bridge the other twenty percent, and twenty percent may even be a little more than what it is. I would think that right now, based on what I'm seeing, we're probably about forty thousand dollars short of, of where we need to be. So we're, we're certainly headed in that direction. So again, that's sixty-five percent covered on the federal level. We leave federal money on the table every year that's dedicated for Dillon County, that's dedicated for other counties, but because of not being able to lock down the local funds, those federal funds go somewhere else. And we, I really want to try to figure out how to make that stop. I want to, if the federal funds are available and we can make it work, then I'd love to make it work. If it doesn't make sense, then don't want to do it. You know, we'll, we'll say we'll go in a different direction with it. Moving on, I talked about the Marlboro County growth because I think there's some similarities in the industry between Mohawk and a few, a few other places. And we started Marlboro County in last December, and you can look at the charts, every month we're taking over five hundred folks to Mohawk, and that's really not even a lot of service, that's just connecting McCall and Clough and, and Bennettsville to Mohawk Industries. So over five hundred people, five hundred trips every month, they're going to work. And that's been kind of growing. The demand response, you can see we started at a real low number and just through the roof. It's really doing well. And every one of these slides, it's the same story. Right now, Marlboro County is over three thousand trips per month, is what we're doing. And, you know, Dillon County with the connectivity between Latta, Little Rock, Lakeview, and all those, you can, you can certainly do probably a lot stronger than those three thousand trips a month. After working with, talking with area industry, and, and having those meetings with Commerce and, and some other, other folks, H R managers, we, we found out that certainly the need is there. We anticipate well over a hundred employees coming to work in Dillon County every day from those other areas, and that's really conservative within that number is going to be a lot more than that, as long as they're willing to, to work with us. One thing we want to do is be, we want to be able to have a core group of basically ambassadors, whether it's somebody from the county and city and local communities that, you know, when you see something that needs to be changed, that we come together, we're able to have, you know, collaboration conversation. If there's a bus stop that doesn't make sense, have somebody talk about that, let's, let's figure out how to make it work. There's milestones ahead that go back months ago, those need to move forward. We're able to make this happen. And then one of the main things, we, we transport a lot of senior citizens, a lot of veterans, a lot of students, medical patients, employees, and shoppers. We talked about the employees earlier. You may not know this, but we do surveys every year across our entire system, everything that we do. A lot of folks, they don't understand, they don't, they don't know much about it, but we, over forty percent of the people that are using our bus are going to work. They're going to go earn money. They bring that money back to local communities and they actually spend it. Over twenty percent are going to medical appointments, nineteen percent are going for educational purposes, whether it's Tech or Francis Marion or Northeastern Tech, and they're going for those purposes. And then about twenty-one percent are shopping, they're visiting others or paying bills. That's what they do. So they're either going to go earn money or, or spend money. That's basically everybody that's on the bus. We don't have, we have very few people just riding around in circles all day. They don't really do that a whole lot. Now, when it's twenty degrees outside, some of them, they, they heat in the house, bro, and they try to do that. Your next slide talks about bus stops, and I'm almost there, you know, I promise. The bus stops themselves, we don't go out and start throwing up bus stops. We actually take a lot of data, we do on-off counts across our entire system, to figure out where it makes sense to put, to put bus stops. Then we have to do encroachment permits, we have to do dig save before we ever mount anything, we have to go through a design review board to make sure they're okay with, with what we want to put in the ground. And there's going to be areas, get this thing figured out, where passenger shelters are needed, where, you know, senior citizens, elderly someone that has a disability, they need to sit down, they don't want to, you know, stand and wait for a bus. The good thing about that is eighty percent federal funds can do all that. So basically, for every ten bucks spent, spent on those, we have to have two dollars, and the two dollars at the final on the local level. But we could do that, you know, across the system. So with that being said, again, I appreciate, you know, the movement forward with the process. The one thing that I'm trying to nail down now is the collaboration, the agreements. We, we have to get those signed and committed. I think you are aware that we're looking at trying to at least do three-year commitments for every N C D that we speak with. We're doing pretty good with that. We have, we have quite a few left, and, you know, some, as we've shared in the past, are waiting to see what Dillon County wants to do, and seems like we're headed in the right direction. So I'm here for any questions or concerns that you may have.
Yes, I have one question right here. When you propose service territorial routes, is this pretty much extra stones to make sure we can accommodate everybody? I'm going to say that real close.
I would, I don't, I would never say anything's extra stone. We're, we're, one thing that we are is we're flexible. You may, we may put a product out there day one that within a month, we realize it needs to be shaped and molded, and, you know, we're not hitting an area that needs to be served, and we're going to figure out how to make that happen. There's going to be areas that we're going to run bus service that we don't need to run bus service. We try not, we try to avoid this by doing public hearings, outreach, speaking with folks that, that know the area. You know, I'm not from Dillon, and the past year, I've gotten to know a lot about Dillon and the surrounding areas, just because I'm there, I'm, I'm having these meetings and hearings, but we want to make sure that the product we're putting out there, it makes the most sense, it's the most economical, the better bank for the buck, whatever we need to do to be able to try to make sure we're, we're reaching the broader audience. So everything is certainly flexible.
So you'll be doing some kind of study, maybe to find out which is the best place to put stops, or what?
So one thing we do, we do on-off counts, that's how we figure out where the bus stops and bus locations are. We would like to start out with little, I'd say, y'all know where they are, politician-type signs, when it's time for you to, you know, get voted in again. We start out with something like that because they're temporary, and of course, whenever grass is cut, they disappear sometimes, but that's kind of how we start out, to just show folks where the buses are, and then we'll go replace a few of them. And then once that's established, we'll have enough data. We collect all our data, nothing is hitting, anybody that's a stakeholder, they, they receive our reports, we show on-off counts, how many passengers are using the service, where they're coming from, we collect all that data.
Y'all do some advertising, we'll let everybody know y'all coming, y'all going to be running routes here, and he going to start and all that before he starts and everything?
We've had eight public hearings so far, but that's just, that's the beginning of it.
I mean, the public hearing, that's the, people don't know anything about it.
There's going to be, there's going to be a lot, a lot of outreach and, and information sharing as far as that goes. I'm hoping that we can do a lot with the Dillon Herald to get the word out there. We'll, we'll have to work with the other entities as far as connecting the counties, but all of that's part of the plan.
What's your hours, well, your public during the day probably would be?
Uh, what we're looking to do is, if we're bringing in all these area industry folks, employees into work, some of these routes in the outer line communities are going to have to start at five thirty in the morning, five o'clock in the morning. The plan would be initially is to bring those employees to work, they're going to be arriving between six and seven thirty, and then around eight, eight thirty, start the public service side. So anybody who wants to go to a doctor's appointment, anybody who wants to get to and from area businesses downtown or in the other communities, we'd be able to run that service from basically eight, eight a.m. until it's time to go get those first shift. Yeah, that's right. And then that, that's, that's the beginning. So, I mean, I strongly feel like this service is going to take off similar to what we've seen in the past. Harshwell, I was presenting last night at their city council, and the services is every month is increasing, and they, they told me that's not, they, they need a transit system, not a bus. And so they're, you know, they have, what will it take to get another bus, to increase frequency to, to thirty minutes instead of hour headway around the city? So there's a lot of potential. The thing is, is you got to start in order to be able to, to do more.
Any more questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it. I appreciate you. And there is a, there is a, an agreement. It would be for the three-year commitment, and there's some language in there, and that's something that I know that, as I shared, other entities are waiting, that's something that I would probably have to have from county council, along with, I think y'all already kind of proved moving forward, but we would need that to be able to move forward. Thank you. Thank y'all very much for just time.
Six E, employees conducting business.
Okay, so during one of our meetings with the Fire Service Committee, we talked about that concept when, as it related to firefighters, but we decided that that's something we wanted to bring to the council to make as a, as an overall employee policy, that employees are not allowed while they're on the job to conduct business. And by business, we're not talking about, you know, such a doctor's appointments, or you have to call the school for your child, we're not talking about that kind of personal business. We're talking about conducting profit-making businesses on county time, and that's basic, that's just a basic concept that you find in, in most other counties. You just can't be doing that while you're on the job, and that's what that, we're looking to see if that can become a policy for Dillon County employees.
What, what came up to bring this out?
What'd you say now?
What come up for this going to be made policy? If something happened in the county, you find this problem from county employees doing this?
Uh, we've had county employees in the past and some in the present that have conducted businesses while on county time. And, and because of that, instead of just saying you can't do it, we want to put it as a, as a, as a policy in writing. There's always been a feeling that, hey, you can't be doing that, but it needs to be in writing if we're going to enforce it.
If you, if you make a policy, then what's the penalty? If they violate it?
Uh, it's just like every other, uh, well, that's, that would be for, for council to decide. I mean, you're the one that makes the policy, and, and part of that policy would be penalties.
But you asked us to make a policy, but you haven't given us nothing, no by far guideline or what could be the punishment. You want us to make a policy, but you want, but you...
I'm asking this, how do you...
If you want to make a policy, if you want us to make a policy, I got no problem making a policy. What I'm saying, what is, what is the consequence? Have you, have you got something to present us? If they violate this policy, what I think the policy should be, is this going to be the punishment? We can make a policy, but if we ain't got no punishment, there ain't no going to have no policy.
That's for council to decide. I want you to decide. What you think should be the, is it, I mean, it could be termination, it could be a warning, it could be just...
Well, we can't make that decision in the meeting.
Let, let me say this, wouldn't you handle it like you handle any other policy?
And, and that's, that's really what we would do.
I don't know how to handle any other policy.
If it's against, if it's against policy, then it would be, it'd be subject to termination or some type of consequences or punishment, you know, and that would be based on what that supervisor or myself would, would deem fit.
But it ain't detailed what? I mean, that you going to leave up to your discretion as the minister?
What, what, why don't we, if this, why don't we get something in writing and submit it? I don't think it would be very, a very short policy, put something around, we'll bring it back? Is that, I mean, is that...
It, it, it's fine. We really want to get something put in place, and we can wait till the January meeting, and we can give you something in writing that, but that's something that, that council really needs to come up with, with council believes that.
I support the policy.
Let me finish, let me finish. Let me finish. Last time, this statement was made that, you know, everyone else is making policy,[1748.25] Let me finish. Last time, this statement was made that, you know, everyone else is making a policy, council needs to make a policy. So I want council to make a policy.
Okay, if county make a policy, then you want county to make, if, if they violate the policy, you want county to set the penalty?
Um, yeah.
That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking.
Well, let me say this, Alan. It would probably be, and I'm just thinking, I mean, you would follow it just like any other policy we got under the county that maybe have write-ups or suspensions.
There should be...
But it in every situation a little bit...
There, it is.
That's why you can't follow that same policy you talking about.
We're probably going to have to change that to, because that could, could be a different level of station there.
Thank you.
So we need to get together on what we're going to do for a fraction like that, because that is serious.
Maybe, I don't want to put something in writing, but I think you need to have a, your, like a committee get together and, and, and deal with it.
You want to just table it? I think it's best just table it right now.
That would be my suggestion, but that's, uh, uh, uh...
Most table it.
Mr. Scott, you understand what I'm saying, don't you?
I understand clearly what you're saying.
Okay.
Have a second, have a discussion, all the favor, table it. F, employee bonus policy.
So, much like other policies or, or other things that we have in this county, there's nothing written. Um, we have, it was approved several years ago that, uh, county employees receive Christmas bonuses and then the fall bonus that they get right, uh, around Labor Day. And we don't have a policy in place that says who gets those bonuses and how much they get. Whether you're part-time, whether you've been there a long enough period of time. But that needs to be, uh, drafted to a policy. Now, that doesn't have to be done right away because our next bonus is in September. But it's no use just putting, putting, putting things off. We need to go ahead and, and get something in place so that our finance department isn't stuck with phone calls with people demanding bonuses. And then we don't know, there's no written policy for it. You know, so that needs to be considered and that needs to be done, um, you know, at least before the next couple of months.
And Mr. Chairman, if you were going to have a committee meeting, you could probably address that there. And what he's, what he's talking about, I assume everybody understand, understands if there's a new employee, it's maybe a month, do they get the full bonus that everybody else is getting? Uh, or do they have to be a certain number of months or they get a prorated bonus based on how long they've been here?
That should be filled through with the sign.
That's the concept, but that does need to be reduced to, to a policy that can be enforced.
Will it to, we get some? One more, have a second, I'll be ready. Six G, Dillon County Fire Department SOBs, fire coordinator from the table.
Mr. Chairman, Dillon County Council and the committee. Good evening. Dillon County Fire Chiefs and the Safety Committee have reviewed the standard operation guideline and have set fit to update our SOBs. We are here today to present the proposed revision for Dillon County SOBs. We are hoping that the county council would agree that implementing these revisions would improve and enforce the performance, organization, and overall safety structure in Dillon County Fire Departments. Dillon County Fire Departments are critical facilities that has been built to operate by rules, curriculums, laws, and federal regulations to protect people and property that's continued to excel within each department and in turn provide the best fire service to the residents in Dillon County. Dillon County Fire Fire SOP page of change. All of you all should have a copy of that. Number one, SOG standard operating guideline changed to SOP standard operating procedures.
Well, first of all, has council had a chance to review this? I mean, that, that was put in the package. Um, I guess, you know, for time, you just might want to ask, are there any questions about...
What we asking, we asking every, asking you all to vote to change our SOBs to SOPs? Because, uh, guidelines are just general rules. Procedures are a way of doing things. So if we continue to operate under the guidelines, people just do things sometime and not following procedures. So we want to change our SOBs to SOPs to procedures. Asking council to vote to change that.
I got a problem with some of that, Mr. Moses. I got a problem with some of that, and I'll explain to you why. And I read these and I studied them. You asking the council, or you recommending to the council to approve these new changes?
First, we actually to change the, the SOBs to procedures.
Are we going to do them one at a time?
One at a time.
We'll do one at a time?
Yeah.
No, no, hold on, hold on, hold on. Stop for a second. I mean, do you...
Man, I think that's what the chairman had received.
The, the Fire Safety Committee approved these to present to council as a set of changes. Now, the question is, do we want to approve them one at a time and go through each and every one of them? Or do we want to approve the whole set, um, as, as a set of changes? Because the, the fire chiefs voted on each one of these and they approved them, um, most of them unanimously, but some of them, um, four to, four to one.
I would agree with some of the changes, but on one of them in particular, it says the fire chiefs have agreed that we want to be elected every two years. Well, that fire chief got to say that's what they want. And that, that ain't right.
We don't vote on the budget one item out of that, do we? We just vote on the whole budget?
No, we, we vote on the whole thing.
Yep, but I gotta write, but I gotta write the speech now. Okay, go ahead, Steve.
I mean, we just, we, we kind of vote on the budget. I mean, you're going to start voting on every single item.
No, I, I don't, I don't, I don't suggest that we do a line item vote on this.
So what you're saying is you pass one, you pass them all, and we don't have a chance to express our feelings about it?
I, no, I...
You have a chance.
You, you understand what I'm saying. I, I never said that. You have a chance right now, you have a chance right now. And that's why you were giving, that's why the rules are that you are giving these in, in enough time to review them. So when he comes up here, you can ask him, well, I, I might have a question for number two or number four or whatever. You can ask him which ones that you have a problem with.
Mr. Barry, county attorney, have you seen these?
I have.
Have you studied them?
I have.
And as, as the county attorney, as a councilman, don't I have a right to question this? This is only a recommendation, ain't it?
You, you, you do have the right to do that. I mean, it's been submitted to you on the agenda to discuss and for a potential vote. And I think, Mr. Chairman, as chairman, you can determine whether you want to entertain a motion for the entire packet to pass or if you want to do them one at a time. But regardless, you get to voice your opinion on any individual item.
Nobody said you can't...
Don't boast my opinion. All right, can I finish now? All right, let me think. The only problem I got is this here. The fire chiefs are saying we want to pass a policy that says we're going to be the fire chief for two years and then y'all can have election. And for a new chief, if you want one. Right now, they're staying, they voted in every year.
That's correct.
But these fire chiefs want to come together with them a plan and say, well, let's say we're going to stay two years. Let's get the county approval to stay two years. That's one problem with that. Next problem with that, you got fire, you got firemen on the fire department that's been on twenty and thirty years. These old cats, what I call them. You got in this requirement, there's certain requirements you want these firemen to have at a certain period of time. And if they don't have it, you say put them off the fire department. Is that, is that law, is that state law or just a recommendation?
That, those, listen, this is, this is it. It's a law.
Can I see a copy of it?
Uh, you, it's, we make, every county makes their own curriculum. That's a state law.
Can I see a copy of it?
Uh, you, you recommend last week, there's a statute says we could do this.
Show me what you saying is the law.
Everything on the...
I'm arguing with this is the law.
Everything on this paper, a recommendation by the fire chief, and that's the law.
The bottom line is, we're going to vote on it, but you saying that these guys have been on the fire department ten, twenty years. If they don't, if they don't go to school and get the required, we're going to put them off the fire department. Let me finish, Tony. Let me finish. I want to be folks to hear this. I want them to hear me. They saying, you telling these folks, well, they kept been on this long, that long. We got the new requirement that we come up with. The state ain't saying mandatory, but we coming up with these changes. And if these guys don't meet these changes, then they don't have to get off the fire department. Normally, we already ain't got nobody on the fire department because of short. And you going to take these volunteer firemen and tell these volunteer firemen, well, I'll tell you what y'all do. Y'all going to go to school and take these classes. We ain't, we ain't paying enough. But you going to take this in and do all this to get off the fire department if you don't meet the required. But if we pass it, that's what's going to happen.
That is exactly. So we want people to be certified, listen at this, Mr. Campbell. We want people who we have on the fire department to be certified and ought to fight fire. We have people right now that's on the fire department is not certified. And that is a state law.
But the law says all, all the firemen have to have eleven fifty-two.
Nope, that, all you have to do is eleven fifty-two to get on there. But six months after he's on there, you have to have firefighter one.
Show me a copy of the law.
I got, I got it right here.
We showed it.
It's, it's in the, it's in the Fire Academy. You go to Fire Academy website.
No, sir, I'm asking you show it to me. You said the law just showed it, and I'm going to argue with you.
It's a national requirement, NFPA, and it's also an OSHA requirement in order to be certified.
There's a difference between a requirement and a law, Mr. Heywood. You can't believe that. You know that.
Mr. Campbell, it's a, OSHA says you shall not, you can't have a fair, I've been here. That's the law.
That is, that's all I'm saying. I ain't talking about the beer.
That's, that's in year nineteen ten.
I ain't talking about the point where you trying to make these guys go get certified. If they don't get certified, you telling them, if you don't go get this and go get that, you are the fire department in certain of the town. Is that a law or that's your recommendation?
What we have on here, if our engineers are not certified and our firefighters, firefighter one, as a law. As a law, that they cannot interior fight fire.
Mr. Barry, you the county attorney.
They cannot fight fire.
If, 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 if there's a law, people being right, right?
Well, if there would be laws or regulations governing it.
I would imagine you may do a showman a law.
I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a...
Police officers that are one, uh, one of them class up three, I mean, but they don't, they can't...
To me, I would want somebody qualified.
I would want somebody qualified to put my house out.
If you, if a police officer came up and he knew laws of the day, like me and Buzz and Art, you know what they'll do? Their grandfather's in this, but y'all been around long enough, this don't require y'all, but it requires new people coming on out or not. But you telling the old people, but if you don't get these changes, then y'all going to have to get off the fire department. So who going to fight fire when they get off?
Well, who, hey, police shooting, they can qualify.
Ronald, Ronald, Ronald.
That come from the Fire Academy right there. Uh, firefighter one, you got to be certified to be, fight fire.
What about, what about, there's another point you want me to...
That, that's on that sheet, eleven fifty-one.
And, and you got, and you got little fire chief be on two years. But once you approve one of these, you approve all of them, is my point.
Mr. Chairman, I think so. I'm, I was here as a public safety committee. We had a meeting. Moses was here. Carl Williams, a member of the committee, he was here. Jeep was sick, he, he couldn't attend, but two of the three of the members were there. All the fire chiefs were there either connected by telephone. And we, this meeting lasted two and a half hours. They went through everything individually and really discussed and debated things. And, um, they came up with what they thought was the best. The fire, the firemen, fire chiefs voted on it, or their representatives to the exception of the people voted on it. And every fire chief in the county voted for it except for one chief. And so we went with majority and we thought this was the best thing for the fire service of Dillon County. And that's why we got Moses to present it to the council today.
And he recommended that the council follow his policy. And once we passed one of them, we passed them all. And those same firemen you talking about saying, I want to be the fire chief for two years and don't have no, don't, don't, don't have no, no license for two years. Now is one year, but he finally wants to prove it for two years. Is that law?
But they're voted on by their fear.
That's right.
That's right. That's why people vote for us for four years, but they might not want us for four years.
They have, they have... Who changed the law, who changed the law to two years, Steve? That's what they want to change.
We will, we vote on it. We got seven people in the room.
And, and the fire department, and you can tell all these old firemen and all these old cats, well, if you don't get all this training now, you're getting off the fire department. And when somebody house out there burning three or four people, show up, well, where is all the firemen at?
One of the oldest firemen in Dillon County is Henry Brooks. And when he's, 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 he was seventy-three years old and got his fire five...
And he's got it.
What if a man, you said a man got six months to do a certain thing? What if he can't get in, in the training in six months?
It says in there on one of those sheets availability, if the class is available.
I oppose it. Y'all can go ahead and make a recommendation, vote on it, do whatever you want. I spoke how I feel about it.
Anybody else got any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, let me just say this. Mr. Heywood, how you doing?
All right, how are you?
I do understand the discussion is to hand. And I certainly looked at it and, um, I am concerned, and this is my concern. My concerns are there was a fire out in the Riverdale community. And there were only five firemen responded to a two-station response. And that kind of bothered me. Uh, I did look over these SOBs or standard operation guide or however y'all opposed to the payment. And there are a lot of things I do agree. I agree with some of the things that's in there. Uh, I do agree that you have to have what's basically qualified to fight a fire. If those are the rules, those are the rules. Uh, but however, I do look at some of this stuff and I am concerned. And here's my concern. I would not want to vote to put extra strain on people that is fighting fires because we all know we're not paying them much and it's hard to get people to fight a fire. And to put them through extra stuff that's just not the law, was not qualified.
Don't say not the law.
Okay, I will take that back.
Okay.
I'll take that back.
Because we make the curriculum. Once you make the curriculum, that's the law.
That part again, okay, I'll, I'll take that back. My bad. But I wouldn't want to put extra strains on them that just going to put them in a strained situation where it would deter them from wanting to be fire. Now, we have to understand, we got to think, you know, this game up here is chess and not chess.
Right.
We need to think, if we put these guys in a strained situation and they resign or they turn in their gear and quit, who's going to fight fires in Dillon County? And we don't have a mess going on because a lot of these guys, they work extra jobs. Uh, they do it not because of the money, they do it because of the love in it. But if we push them in a corner, I'm afraid that we going to have a problem getting people to fight fires. And when they come to my house, and you can't put my house out, it's going to burn down. When they come to your house and they cannot put your house out, it's going to burn down. So I think we need to go back to the table, reconsider some things and just look at it again. As it said right now, I cannot support it because we know for a fact that fighting a fire is a dangerous job. Very dangerous.
Mr. Scott, now say something now.
Yes, sir.
One of the reasons, that's why we want everybody to be certified because it's dangerous. Eleven fifty-two takes you to the door, firefighter one, puts you in there where the heat is at. And you got to get the warrant to the fire.
And Mr. Heywood, I understand.
If they go in there and fight fire and not certified and somebody died, we are going to be in something. I can get another house, you can get another house. But if we go in there and put a man inside that zone of fighting fire, somebody is going to be in a, a, a big mess. And I don't plan for it to be me. So we present this to you all today and hoping that you all will pass it because we don't have that many guys that are not firefighter one.
What you saying, the state is requiring this requirement?
Once it, once, once you make that curriculum, that class, he needs, he has to be required, the law says, before you go there and fight fire.
You saying that the state requires...
Check any penalty in the state.
You saying the requirement requires all we changes, don't require.
All those changes on there, we got a name that's they require. Firefighter one, it requires.
It's law.
It's law.
Show it to me, Mr. Heywood.
I'm telling you right now, this come from the Fire Academy.
Mr. Barry, you can't, you seen that?
I, I have not made that comparison.
I'm, I got one thing I'm going to say and I'm going to be done. If, if, if people are out there fighting fire, because they, they do it because that's what they want.
Right.
I think most of them are going to want to get the training.
Right.
Uh, you wouldn't want me to go to your house, a bunch of people like me going to your house, put out fire because your house going to burn down. Because later, I'm not training. So I, I wouldn't want people to train.
I remember, I remember four men that showed up at my house with firefighters one that could go in the house and put the fire out. They tend to stand on the other side and talk, they didn't go in the house.
I put it in mind, y'all decide what y'all want to do. Somebody know what they doing.
You got to remember, the fire chief...
If they can't pass these requirements, who you got?
Get them off.
Okay, okay.
The fire chief was the one that got with the safety committee and brought this together. The fire chief, Mr. Albert and I...
If you made that easy to get, why they short now?
Mr. Albert...
Not everywhere short.
Mr. Albert can tell you right now...
There ain't no qualifications. They making up these new rules.
Not everywhere short.
Those are not, those are not new rules. Those are not new rules. What's happening?
When I was working, I trained to be on the fire day at my job. He's telling the truth about the law.
Everybody, everybody kind of calm down a little bit.
Right, right.
You got something to say?
Just one short comment. And it took me a while to educate myself on all these numbers, eleven fifty-two.
Right, right.
But the best I understand, I talked to a lot of people in the last few days, I'm just saying, eleven fifty-two, you're on the fire department.
Right.
You cannot go inside to fight fire.
Right, right.
Because you're not certified to go.
To go inside, right.
If you have fifty people show up outside and you don't have anybody that is firefighter one, they legally can't go in without putting a cam in a jack.
Right, unless that, unless that fire chief...
Orders him in.
Orders him. Say, Moses, you need to go and have fire, fighter day. But this is going to be a situation, he's going to decide because he's know my training, he's know everything. And he's putting himself in that position and the standard...
And he assumes that audacity once he does that.
Right.
I'm not only piece myself in that position.
And but the county as well is assuming that audacity.
As a fire chief in Dillon County, I put all y'all in that, in that situation.
Let's go ahead, boy.
So anyhow, firefighter one allows somebody to legally go in.
Go inside.
Unless the chief orders an eleven fifty-two to go in.
Right, right, go ahead, me too, with it, right.
Moses, let me finish my statement.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We were specifically, I think.
I'm sorry.
You know, right?
Right.
And I just understand the basics of what you gotta have.
Right.
And you, and it's like a police officer, you gotta have a basic police training. I had that when I was officer.
Right.
But also, I didn't have, uh, investigator one, investigator two, and things like that, it wasn't required. The other thing I'm saying, if things that are in there that is not required, then we shouldn't push it on. It's common sense to know that you need to be certified in whatever vehicle it's in.
Right.
And, and that part I get, but to put, when I read this, and I look at some of this extra stuff, like pump one and all this kinda stuff, I don't even know what that mean.
Right.
And if it's not required, I, I just don't feel safe pushing that on these guys, and, because I'd hate to see our fire department fall. I'd hate to see people quit because of this, and I think that's what's gonna happen. Thank you, sir, I feel about you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I have concerns, um, station five already been made a substation because we shortened some staff. And see, with these things in place here, we don't wanna be put in a position where we short of hell, that's my concern. But I do believe that they have to be trained.
Right.
Everybody need to be skilled in what they do.
Right.
You don't want the county being any liability, but we need to look at this very closely to ensure that we are not putting a strain on the people that's been there a while, that's been fighting fires for a while, to make sure that we can uncover this, so we, we run into a problem of short staff.
Right, I understand, right.
Can I say one little shit?
Yes, sir.
I am very ignorant about the fire department.
Right.
Very ignorant, I'm not well read up on it, well studied up on it, and the average person that listens to fire people don't know what they're talking about.
Exactly.
You know, what they're talking about, and I'm in that position. But I will share this with the council and to the taxpayers of this county. Every call I got today was for me to vote no. Now, why? I asked no questions, why? Because I know if they ask, so that's why I'm here.
I, I, I just wanna say something, it's the only, only thing required by all firefighters, these volunteers, is that you're eleven fifty-two, and then in six months, you're firefighter one, by these new ones.
Right.
That's it, not no other stuff by your firefighter. Now, the other stuff is for, to be able to be a chief, which is over your fire department, and other ones, the other requirements to add on are your engineers, who are the full-time employees.
Right.
And I do think that your full-time employees and your chief do need extra qualifications. But the only thing we're adding on for the, all the firefighters, is that you have firefighter one along with eleven fifty-two. That way, every firefighter would be able to go into a house, that's one extra thing for every firefighter. It's not a bunch of different thing for every firefighter.
But always.
It's for the chiefs and for the full-time engineers that are working there every day, running the fire truck and everything. If you gotta run, if you're working on, if you're running a fire truck, you don't know how to cut, put a pole, you don't even know how to run, you don't even know how to run a fire truck.
All I'm asking you this here, all I'm asking you this here, they've been fighting fires before we all got here. If the state's sending things that all this is mandatory, now y'all got to do this, or y'all, or y'all five or six got to give and come up with these new rules?
The, the state don't say anything, just, any, any county, but they have the guidelines that they give you that all up.
And all this is mandatory, what you wanna.
That's exactly.
Alright, we hear that.
Uh, it requires a motion.
I make a motion, then we pass, um, what the company says the committee recommended.
Alright, got a motion in a second.
I'll say, when I told them I would, I'm doing it.
Alright, got a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Six H, recreational question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have one from the Quan's World of Dylan, and they're asking, um, for money to make some needed improvements to the ballpark, so your dancing and scoreboard and other items, receiver's gonna give a hundred, is that right?
That's for who, James?
One, miss. Anybody else wanna give? Okay, and then I have one from the Underdog, Underdog on Top Entertainment. And they're gonna have a, um, violence, assault, violent street violence tournament on Sunday, December twenty-second. And they're asking for, um, money if y'all gonna help them out, they would like a hundred dollars from each, each council member.
I give a hundred.
I give a hundred.
Who is that again?
Underdog, Hunter Dog on Top Entertainment. It was Hunter Jack.
Sean the Thay, that's me.
Oh, okay.
That's why I was trying to take that.
So everybody's giving a hundred. That's all we got.
It requires a motion. Got a motion, we'll put a recreational question. Got a motion in, need a second? Got a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven, financial report.
This is as of December ninth, on our general fund account, we had three million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Out of that, we had accounts payables, two million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. This left us, left us with a net available balance of one million, three hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars.
What was that total again?
Uh, the net balance was a million, three hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars.
At eight, ordinances, A, second reading ordinance by Dillon County Council to amend the text of the R S three different special, it does exemptions. Requires a motion. I made a motion, stop, let me, for sure. Got a motion, need a second? Second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? A B, a proposed rural development project consisting generally of improvements to the Dillon County Airport, equipment for Dillon County and building improvements, requires a motion.
Now, my understanding is this is a first by title. And thi- this is, um, basically what we need to do in order to accept grants from the USDA. We, we're required to do a public reason, based on this.
First time.
So this is first reading?
Yeah.
Requires a motion. I made a motion, Mr. Chair.
Hold on, let me, let me correct something, that's, this is, this is the reading. That, you said, you, what they're saying is that's all they require, but it's not an ordinance that we're gonna actually pass. Right, this is, they just require this one reading.
Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Nine, resolution, A, resolution designating including Elite Fuarts Manufacturing LLC as a sponsor affiliate in satisf- satisfaction of the requirements of Title twelve, chapter forty-four, South Carolina Code, so as to allow the sponsor affiliate to qualify for benefits pursuant to a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes for arrangement between Golden Spectrum LLC, Hersch Holdings LLC, and Dillon County, South Carolina, and other matters related there to. Requires a motion. I made that motion, Mr. Chair.
Say.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Alright, ten, administrator report.
Good evening, um, I wanna talk about a few things here, first of all, uh, about what we had discussed before about a mechanic for the county, we have, um, been advertising, we do have a couple of applications that are in, and we're gonna be considering that, and hopefully that'll work out, I just wanna give, I had some questions about that, for some councilmen, I just wanna make sure that that was made public. Uh, also, as far as the landfill, we do have all of our trucks except for one running, and that one, um, lacks a transmission that, as you may recall, that was, uh, approved, we fixed it sometime before, and the company that we took it to, um, it's still under warranty, so we just send it back and forth, but other than that, you know, everything in the landfill is running. Uh, we do have, um, one piece of equipment that's, that we're getting worked on, but other than that, you know, things are, are looking pretty up for that.
Everything seems to be doing better out there?
Yeah, everything's doing better, um, and I think the people in the general public will see, those who have, those, those cans will see that we're getting them picked up and, uh, and they're being done on time, so, uh, that has been an improvement over the past few months that we've made. Uh, with, with the landfill, uh, the last thing I wanna talk about is the gravel project that we've been doing. It's not on the agenda, but I do wanna, um, talk about it. I just wanna say that, um, tomorrow, if it's a clear day, uh, December twelfth, Thursday, we're gonna resume, um, we're gonna be back in business with, um, the gravel project. Uh, there were some concerns, uh, from some councilmen, and I wanna give them a chance now to just voice their concerns, and I'll be able to answer that, if you have any.
Yeah, I definitely had some concerns, um, and to the level, level of the matter, and Mr. Turner said you here now, I didn't make the meeting because you was not here. What is your take on that from a legal standpoint concerning the C T C fund that was allocated to Dillon County and the Dillon County procurement policy?
Uh, specifically whether we have to follow the procurement policy or not? I believe that if the county is using county funds to purchase the gravel, we have to follow procurement code. Um, I believe that the administrator has some clarification about the process that's being used, that may answer your question. If the C T C money's being used, and they, they're approving it, then I think we don't have to follow that, pop that code. But if we're using our county money, I think it's, I, I believe it's clear we have to follow procurement.
Has it been researched yet as to whether we're using our money for the county money, and has the roads been cleared yet that they're county roads? Are there roads that we can put, build that type revenue on?
Uh, are you, so is your question, are they county roads?
Are they county roads, and can we legally, from a legal standpoint, put that rock on those roads?
Okay, I, I, I don't know specifically which road you're talking about.
Any road.
If, if it's a county, okay, if, any road is not a county road.
Let's say subdivision, can we put them in a subdivision?
If there's a county road through the subdivision.
Okay, have we found out what the danger, and what consists of, of a county road through a subdivision?
Well, there are lots of roads that are in subdivisions that are county roads, and there are lots of roads in subdivisions that are not county roads. Um, some of it boils down to whether the roads have been worked by the county before, whether we've assumed responsibility for working those roads, and in some cases, we actually have easements that have been given on some of those roads, not all of them. The, um, the information I have about specifically Cory's core, is the county's been working that road, so it's a county road. Um, I was asked to take additional steps to get a written easement, which I did, clarifies the responsibilities of the county, and make sure the county's not responsible for any drainage issues related to, to the, to the road, or anything that might be impacted there. But I, I'm just gonna give you an example, one that I happen to know, um, uh, uh, there's some Kendrick Circle, I believe you're familiar with that area. That's a subdivision, that road's paved. And that had to have been used, C T C money years ago had to have been used to pave that, I don't think the highway department came in and took that as a project to do. It was a, it was a county road, uh, was taken as a county road some, many years ago. And so I believe that any road that, I mean, it's my opinion, that any road that the county is now working is a county road, and the money can be used on any public road, as long as, as long as the road's used for a public purpose, and it's a public road, then the money can be used.
And the reason that I ask that question, and wanna make it clear, all of these people in here, in the Dillon Earl, I would like for you to report this. We were told in the past, when I've talked to, um, the transportation committee about paving roads, we were told that it had to be a county road, and you could not put those funds at a subdivision. And they were told to get a petition, and that you'll get a petition, and we will get your road. So I was misled, I've been misleading the people until today, so now it is clear that we can do subdivision.
But if we are keeping the rules, that's not a problem for us to put gravel on the road.
Correct.
And every road that we put gravel on, we went through the protocols and got easements and everything on those roads before we started, right, Tony?
Hold on, hold on, he, he asked me, um, and I'm just gonna say, I got clarification from Joe Stern, who's the South Carolina D O T local, local program administrator in Columbia, the same guy that, that you called.
Yes, sir.
Um, who may have told you something different, because he didn't get the full story, but as long as the roads are maintained in the county system, and we have a prescriptive easement, we can put gravel on there.
Mr. Clav, I, I got one little thing, excuse me.
Right.
Um, in reference to the gravel, we putting this, this gravel on these roads, these citizens want this gravel on these roads. We can make, make, we don't need to make sure that this is not political and holding this process up. Cause I got these people down on Cory's car, excited about this gravel, we had started and they stopped it. So we need to make sure we going through proper guidelines, and make sure we putting right information out there to people, so we don't stop progress, that's my concern.
Well, right down on Fifty Shelby Highway, Pleasant Road, trailer park, those folks been on me for that road for the, when I came on council, I went for Mr. Jack Hayes, he say we can't pave that, cause it's absurd again, so I'm thinking, I'm asking you, Mr. Clav, if the county's been maintaining that road, you have authority to put gravel on it now?
We got the street.
Yeah, that, that, that's been made clear, that's been made clear by.
And already have been maintained by the county.
That's been made clear by Herb Cooper, everyone that.
We can put it on your list to get dead for them, if we can do it.
Well, I, I'm, I'm, well, I asked you that before, and, and you never gave me the road, but I, I'll do that.
Pleasant Road, Pleasant Road.
Look, I have no problem, and, and I wanna make this clear, I have no problem with, with this gravel project moving forward, in fact, I'm the one that's pushing to get it moving. Hold on, hold on, I, I'll let you finish. I, I started, I, I started getting this gravel project done, it's been two years that they've been trying to get this. And now, and the people have all wanted, they wanted this gravel put on their roads, because the C T C gets about eight hundred thousand dollars a year. That's enough to pave a little over three quarters of a mile every year, and that's not gonna do anything for this county. These rocks are about twenty thousand dollars, about fifteen thousand dollars per mile, we can get a lot of mileage done in this county, so we decided to try to get this done. For, for no reason other than, other than political game shit, people have been trying to stop this project. That, it's been legal from the start, there, there's never been a problem with it, I got, I got, I got okay's from everyone in Columbia, the people in Florence, the regional, I spoke with Alan about it, we got it for script of easement, and there was nothing wrong with it from the beginning. It was never a problem with the procurement policy, those funds were never in Dillon County's general funds. Those funds, they never gave us that money.
Mr. Clav, don't you think, don't you think, as a council, if we could've got these subdivision paid years ago, we'd have been dead if we thought we would've been.
I can't concern myself with that, I just got here, I can't concern myself with that.
But you saying I've never been nothing wrong with it, I'm telling you that is, cause that, that's why we have to get a trade. They haven't told you the same thing?
Yeah, man.
Thank you.
Well, maybe. I don't want it personally, man, I got.
See, we dealing with a different situation, excuse me, we dealing with gravel, this stuff has been given to us, okay? We going through the proper chains to get this built, we holding progress up, and if we got some concerns we need to talk about it.
You gotta understand, they saying, it don't care if, if it, if it's free gravel, if they on subdivision, they telling us that we couldn't put it down.
Yeah, but you know what, when, when, when you, when you, when you called Joe Stern, you didn't, you didn't tell him, listen. It, it's different, but when you called Joe Stern, you didn't tell him that, that we actually maintain those roads, and, and, and so, yeah, he told you we couldn't do it, because at that.
So he told me.
Yes, because you didn't tell the whole story.
What is the whole story?
The whole story is that we are maintaining those roads, and we had the easement for those roads.
Don't the powers that have a god, don't the powers that have in the place, don't the county have a power that don't rule out meet church? To the middle street, don't the powers say we got to meet church, jump off to the church? Don't, don't the county have a power that we oughta meet church guideline in order to maintain those roads?
That's correct, there, there's an ordinance, um, was five or six years ago, I believe, you all approved, that says that to bring the county road system as it is, is what it is, regardless of the condition. But that if you're gonna bring a new road in, to the county system, it has to meet, it has to meet certain requirements. It has to be a certain width, and it has to be crowned, and it has to be done.
Right, is all that being checked?
Well, these are not new, these are not new roads.
We live in a little trailer park.
Well, I don't know about that, that's not the one.
That's why these people ain't got the grade on it, I'm worried they haven't got no good. People want some gravel on it.
Well, when it stop, when, 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 don't stop if we put gravel on roads.
You was talking about if we put some gravel on that road, that's illegal.
It's put it on it.
It's been three weeks since we started the gravel project, and stopped it.
Let me just say.
We could've done almost every road.
Well, see, in the past, we have no control over, but right now, they're saying, with prescribed easements, and we working the road, we can put gravel, let's just move forward. I mean, I mean, let's move forward with.
Make a note of it, if it's illegal, don't put it on the road in my district.
Let me ask one final question. Put it in my district. Let me ask one final question, and I'll quit, I'll quit, let me ask one final question, and I'll quit. Now, Mr. Turner, I'm hearing you right, that this is not, this money is, we don't have to follow the procurement policy on this.
No, I didn't say that, I said if county is spending money to purchase something, gravel or equipment that goes on the road, we have to follow procurement. I said if county is spending money to purchase something, gravel or equipment that goes on the road, we have to follow the procurement code.
You're saying the county, this is not county money?
It's not county money.
Okay, good.
That's my understanding now. That, I, I've, I've heard of different takes on it and I'm not-
Mr. Mister, Mister, oh.
He can tell you right here.
Mr. Daddy. If any, if anything that passes through this that Mr. Clive is doing, Paul, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm supporting them to, to get the deal. Do you have to pay them bills?
Yeah, we pay them, the funds we're talking about.
What account do you pay that bill by the?
Eleven fifty, I'll give you.
I'm, I'm, I'm going for what the, uh, I got.
Right now, it's in the restricted funds, on the C T C funds. And they got control over all the money.
Is it true that if you pay, if you pay a bill, if you paying them the bill for, for them, do you have to report that, Mr. James D?